Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening. I call this council meeting of Monday, October 19th, 2020, to order. Welcome to those watching online and those watching at home. Clerk, could you give us a roll call of your city council?
Council members Breckie.
Yes.
Are here. Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Here.
Kylie.
Here.
Nitzer.
Here.
Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Okay, all are here and accounted for. Each council meeting, we start with an invocation and then the pledge of allegiance. Tonight, I'd like to welcome back Lead Pastor Nick Collins from Holy Cross Lutheran Church to provide our invocation, and I would note that I've known Pastor Nick and his family for many years. My wife worked at Holy Cross for many years, and we've attended for many years, so very great to have him here. I'm going to ask you to rise for that invocation and then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Well, thank you, and it's great to be back. David Braybaker writes that "Our language carries power and our communication facilitates change." It's obvious when we look around our world, we turn on the TV, we can see a lot of noise happening, and I don't know that a lot of it is communication. So tonight, I just pray that amongst this group and the work that you all do here for the city and for the state and for the world, that your time would be spent communicating instead of arguing or shouting at one another. We know that as leadership goes, so goes any organization, or in this case, any city. And so we pray for clarity, for compassion, for courage, and for connection as you lead us here this evening and in the days ahead. I invite you all to pray with me. Gracious God, we give you thanks for these leaders that gather here tonight to do the work of the people. We pray, Lord, that you would bless them with wisdom and with strength. You would bless them with good communication, that through the noise they may hear and listen to one another to do what's best for this place, for your world. We pray, Lord, for a spirit of compassion, a spirit of wisdom, a spirit of togetherness as they work together to lead this city. Bless them, bless this time together. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice, for all.
Okay, going to start tonight with the approval of the consent agenda. Looking for any changes or motions on that.
Move approval?
Second sale.
Approval moved by Counselor Selberg. Yes, Counselor Kylie.
I'd like to pull item number two from the approval of contracts and agendas or contracts and agreements. Item two is with Parks and Recreation Ash Tree Tree Removals.
Okay, thank you very much. That item will be pulled and added to the regular agenda. We have a motion to approve by Counselor Selberg, seconded by Counselor Sale. Roll call vote, please.
Council members Breckie.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. We have a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Move approval?
Second sale.
Moved by Selberg, seconded by Sale. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Council members Breckie.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Thank you. That passes eight to zero. At this time, we are at the general public input portion of tonight's agenda. As a reminder, input during this portion will last no more than three minutes per person, and in total lasts no more than 30 minutes. During general public input, the public is welcome to speak on any topic that does not appear later on the agenda. For regular agenda items following general public input, comments are limited to three minutes unless the item being presented for final adoption, in which case input is limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. At this time, I'd like to invite members of the public forward for general public input, and clerk, please note that the time is 7:03. Any general public input? It must be a different night for a council meeting. Seeing none, we are going to move on to the first item that was pulled from the consent agenda. Could you read that, clerk?
Yes, Counselor. The item that was pulled was subitem two to agenda item six, Parks and Recreation Ash Tree Tree Removals to award a bid, Left Key Tree Experts to establish pricing.
Thank you. Counselor Kylie, for your benefit, I do see Scott Russ coming up if you'd like to speak to this, or we can have Scott.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Just very briefly, because all of us received an email expressing concern about the awarding of a contract to remove ash trees from the city right of way, I thought I would pull this item this evening, and yes, Mr. Scott Russ is going to address the bid process regarding this item. Thank you.
Welcome, Scott.
Thanks, Counselor Scott Russ, Finance Office. The ash tree, street tree removal bid was solicited and is in front of you tonight for approval. Bids were solicited through the SEM, Electronic Bid Submission Software. Bids were sent to many local arborists, and many were invited to bid on this solicitation. That doesn't mean that our bids are not seen nationwide. Our bids are actually posted on the web, so bidders from across the nation can actually bid on these bids. The bid was set up in 11 different geographic lots, which focused on the southeast side of Sioux Falls. This allowed smaller companies to get a piece of the business. We do that purposely because there are a lot of small arborists out there. We received 11 different, we had 11 different bidders who submitted a bid, for a total of 86 bids on 11 lots. So the award was let, is in front of you tonight, but it's, it's, we award our bids based on state law. The state law statute is SDCL 518A-7, and I'll read an excerpt from that, from that state law. It states that "The purchasing agency shall award bids within 30 days to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder who meets the requirements of the criteria set forth in the invitation for bids." "The apparent low bidder, which is Left Key Tree Service out of Loveland, Ohio, was a responsive bidder, and it was received on time. The bid was the lowest of all, on all lots of all trees, so on all 11 lots, he was the lowest, for a total of $191,000 lower than all the other bids. The bid then met the requirements of the bid specifications. He has the equipment, the manpower, the arborist license, the insurance, the referenceable experience, and he has a performance bond." Unfortunately, you know, there is no reciprocal state preference in Ohio, meaning that if Ohio had a state preference law, then we could take that same preference also. But since they don't have a state preference law, they have a reciprocal law, just like South Dakota, there was no preference law. South Dakota doesn't have a preference law at all, meaning that we don't get to choose in-state contractors over out-of-state contractors. So we contacted, we had five references. We did contact Village of Glendale, Village of Evondale, City of Covington, and Haven Park Communities. All were very happy with his performance. He performed work last year in North Dakota, and he knows how to work in the cold. He utilizes grapple saws, just like the Parks and Rec Department does, and he's able to cut down the trees very expeditiously, like the Parks Department does. He's safe, he cleans up after themselves, they clean up after themselves, and they're very reliable. These are all comments that came from the references that we checked. So in front of you tonight is a recommendation to award to Left Key Tree Service out of Upland, Ohio, and try and uphold the state statute.
Thank you, Scott. Rick, before I, Counselor Kylie, before I ask the public for any input, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, if there's any members of the public that wish to provide input, I'll wait until they have had their opportunity.
Okay, very good. This is a pulled consent agenda item that we're going to be voting on, so you have the opportunity to provide public input on this agenda item if you'd like to? Seeing none, any questions for Scott or any motions? Counselor Breckie.
No motions, just a comment. And I can do it during discussion, too, but I was just going to make a comment. I just want to thank Counselor Kylie for pulling this item because I think there has been some discussion about there, about why we didn't use a local provider, and I think, you know, you explained it very well, and I think it's just helpful for the public to know. We obviously will try to use local providers when we can, but there's situations, you know, and from a competitive standpoint, we simply can't. So I think it's important for everyone to hear that, you know, how you did that and how you tried to, you know, work that into the process, and so I think that was just, I'm just grateful to Councilmember Kylie for bringing that forward because that issue did come up, and so I'm glad that you had a chance to explain that. I don't have any further questions, but did really appreciate your detailed explanation.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve this item?
Move to approve.
Second Jensen.
Move approval by Breckie, seconded by Jensen. Any other comments? Seeing none.
Just very briefly, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
Well, I'm sure all of us would prefer to see a little over a half million dollars stay within the community. As Mr. Russ just explained, we are obligated to follow state laws as it relates to the bid process, so I will be casting my vote in favor of this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kylie. Roll call vote, please.
Council members Breckie.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
That item passes eight to zero. That brings us to unfinished business. Clerk, could you read the next items?
Item 25, New 2020/21 Retail Malt Beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License and 2021 Retail Wine and Cider License for Me Pueblo Mexican Restaurant Market, 2310 West 41st Street, Suite 106, CUP Not Required, pending final inspections for Health and Building Services. Item 26, New 2020/21 Retail Malt Beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License and 2020 Retail Wine and Cider License for Tarkin Argentinian Restaurant, 1301 East Benson Road, CUP Not Required, pending final inspections for Health. Item 27, New 2020/21 Retail Malt Beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License and 2020 Retail Wine and Cider License for Five Oaks, 480 East 69th Street, CUP Not Required, pending final inspections for Health and Building Services. Item 28, New 2020/21 Retail Malt Beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License and 2020 Retail Wine and Cider, renewal of 2021 Retail Wine and Cider License for Japanese Sushi Hibachi Hawaiian Fusion, 323 South Phillips Avenue, Suite B, CUP Not Required, pending final inspections for Health. Item 29, Transfer of 2020 Package Liquor License from WK Suppliers, Wolfies Liquor Spots, 6811 South Louise Avenue to ODJ Enterprises LLC, Wolfies Liquors, 6811 South Louise Avenue. Item 30, Special One Day Liquor License for T-Slat Incorporated, JJ's Wine, Spirits, and Cigars to be operated, JJ's Axes and Ales, 3016 West 57th Street, for an axe-throwing event on October 22nd, 2020. Item 31, Special One Day Malt Beverage and Special One Day Wine Licenses for Huether Family Match Point, 4210 North Bobhala Drive, for a fundraiser on October 23rd, 2020. And item 32, Special One Day Malt Beverage and Special One Day Wine Licenses for El Riad Shriners to be operated, the History Club, 758 South Phillips Avenue, for a ladies' luncheon on November 7th, 2020.
Welcome, Jamie.
Good evening, Jamie Palmer with Licensing. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on any of these items.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak to any of these items? Seeing none, does anyone have any questions for Jamie? Seeing none, could I get a motion?
Move approval?
Second Jensen.
Approval moved by Counselor Selberg, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Council members Breckie.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Sale. Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. That brings us to item 33.
Item 33, Second Reading and Ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, Rezoning Property Located at 2300 South Ronziak Avenue from the RD2 Townhome Residential Suburban District to the O Office District, number 12667-2020, and amending the official zoning map for the City of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero with the following conditions: One, minimum of a 20-foot front yard setback of South Ronziak Avenue, and two, minimum of two buildings with a separation between the buildings of a minimum of 10 feet. Private applicant, John Brook.
Welcome, Albert.
Albert Schmidt, City of Sioux Falls Planning and Development Services. Thank you, Counselor, for having me this evening. Taking over for Jason tonight. So applicant on this one is Eric Griffin, Damian Grebel, who's present here tonight. The owner is Westwood Valley LLC. The request, again, is to rezone to an O Office District at 2300 South Ronziak Avenue. It's approximately .17 acres, and as you know from the previous first reading on this one, they're proposing to put storage units on there. We've put those two conditions on there to help out with the visual look of the storage units, trying to make it blend in as best possible, and we've presented this information before, so I'll go quickly. But again, the idea here is trying to help the land get used to the best, the highest use based on the limited potential there, while yet still not making an impact to the adjacent property owners as best as possible. So with that, I will take any questions you may have.
Thank you. This is a second reading of this rezoning. Anyone who has any comments would like to, can come up for public input. Welcome, Mr. Grebel.
My name is Damian Grebel, Airheart Griffin and Associates, 300 North Dakota Avenue. I'm here for the developers. They both are sick, and they could not make it tonight, but we would ask for your approval. The developers do agree with the conditions placed on the property, so that's not a problem at all, and other than that, I can answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Other public input? Seeing none, and any questions for staff from the council? If not, any motions?
Move to approve. Breckie.
Moved by Breckie, seconded by Sale. Discussion. Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Council members Breckie.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
That item passes eight to zero. Item 34.
Item 34, Second Reading and Ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, authorizing the mayor to sign the underground electric easement and agreement and to grant an easement to Northern State's Power Company within McKenon Park, sponsors the mayor.
Tori, welcome.
Thank you. Tori Medema, City of Sioux Falls, Park and Rec Department. I'm here for the second reading of this item. I do have the presentation available if needed, but in summary, this is a utility easement request at McKenon Park to bring power and fiber to the small cell tower that will be placed in McKenon Park near the existing parking lot. All the utilities will be underground except for a small meter pedestal near Second Avenue. All the costs for the small cell tower installation, utilities, and restoration of the site are the responsibility of Verizon. There'll be no additional cost to the City of Sioux Falls. We did share this information with the Neighborhood Association at McKenon Park. They did review the request, and they agreed with our staff that it will not be intrusive to the park. We did bring it to the park board, and they recommended approval on September 30th. With that, I'm here to answer any other questions you may have. Thanks.
Thank you. This is a second reading. Anyone who has any public input on this item? Seeing none, any questions from the council for staff or motions? Counselor Breckie.
Got some questions. So this is putting a 5G cell tower up in McKenon Park. Is that correct?
No, the ordinance is to grant a utility easement in McKenon Park. The actual small cell tower was covered under the master license agreement that was agreed to between City of Sioux Falls and Verizon back in 2018.
So we already gave Verizon permission to attach this stuff to the cell tower that's in the park?
So basically what it is, they'll be replacing an existing light pole and putting in a new light pole with their equipment on top. That was approved as part of the master license agreement.
Do we have any plans for putting these towers, you know, these light poles slash towers in our other parks?
This is the first request we've received. We do have, I believe, three other requests that they're working on in Falls Park, but they have not submitted those yet.
And are all those were already approved in the master licensing agreement?
Correct.
Okay, and so it's coming before us in an easement form in order to allow them to hook up?
Yes, so all the small cell towers that go up, they need their own power and fiber optics to those cell towers to make them run and work, so that way that they can pay their utilities and it doesn't become a city expense.
So is there, in our master agreement, was there, I was unaware of that, that that was part of the master agreement. I confess I didn't read every sentence. That's a very detailed agreement. You know, are there, you know, so it just, it's surprising me a little, you know, that that's, you know, part of what we're doing. Are there parks other than, is it, allow us to put it in any of our parks? Does that master agreement cover all of our parks?
Yes, yes. So the master license agreement covered installations in the right of way and in the parks.
So if we didn't want it to go up in a specific park, the only way that we could stop that from happening would be to vote against this easement? Because if we didn't give them the easement, then they couldn't put it in pursuant to the master agreement.
So the master agreement does say that it has to be as part of, to replace an existing light pole so that we don't have a bunch of extra fixtures in the park, and that that cell tower needs to match the aesthetics of the light pole that it's replacing. So in McKenon Park, we do have historic lights, and so that will, the cell tower will look like a historic light with just their cell equipment on top of it.
And I guess at this point, and maybe this is, you know, at this point, do you know, are there other, are there parks other than Sioux Falls and, or I mean, other than McKenon and Falls Park that we intend to put these up in, or is this kind of still, they're still rolling out their plan?
Those are the only ones I'm aware of at this point. They, they are, I know that they've put a lot of small cell towers in the right of way already. I do have an example of the one that they put right across the street from city center. Haven't had any, any real complaints as far as the aesthetics of any of those.
You alluded to the fact they've got a presentation. I would like to see it. Just, it would, you know, help my comfort level to, and I think it would be good for the public to see what we're actually doing out there. I know that there's good camouflage techniques these days, but just interested because we're doing this to our parks.
Yeah, so the two pictures to the right are basically, the one up top is a small cell tower that was put right across the street from city center, right in front of the main library. If you can see at the, at the top of the pole, there's three boxes there. That's the cell equipment that runs that small cell tower. The picture in the bottom is basically our historic light poles. This one's on Phillips Avenue. They're the same type that will be at McKenon, and the only difference between that picture and what they'll be installing is they'll, they'll be about a four-foot extension in the middle of those two globes that will have those, those three boxes at the top.
Thank you. That was very helpful, and I do appreciate being able to see, and that is consistent with what they showed us back when we were passing that agreement as to the size of what the intrusive items would be that would be placed on our light poles. So I appreciate that. I just have a question for Stacy at this point.
Please.
And again, not trying to put you in an unfair situation, you know, but, you know, it seems a little unusual to me, you know, granting easements for private, private entities to use our park. Are you aware of any other easements of any kind that we have, you know, that allows the private sector to go into our parks, you know, in order to operate their business in our parks, basically? Just a little concerned about that.
The first thing I would mention, I guess, is we'd want to look back at that master license agreement. I don't know that it's accurate, and I'm not saying you're wrong, but I don't know that this is purely a private entity. I mean, there's a telecommunications act component to this that enables them, if I recall from our conversations back in the day, they're coming regardless. There are right of way components to this where they are entitled to that access. This was a method through this contract of controlling where they went, and so when it comes to this, we'd have to pull the license agreement to see, if you're looking for, you know, line by line, what parks have, have, you know, can you anticipate these types of impacts? But again, what we're going back to is the ability to control where these go because they are entitled by right, and don't hold me to, but it is some type of telecommunications act. I think that may be the term that says they get to come. So I guess is the question, where are the other ones? I guess I kind of started with the-
Well, no, I guess I just, you know, I do recall, and again, you can correct me if I, if I didn't, don't recall it right, but I do recall when we talked about the telecommunications act, that they had access to our right of ways. But right of way and parks, you know, parks properties, it's totally different, and, you know, and so maybe their rights were broader, but I only remember it being, you know, that they had this absolute right to enter our right of ways. And, you know, I am aware that, you know, our ability to do things with parks is restricted in and of itself. Everything about the parks is kind of a separate section in state law, and, you know, there's a lot of things that, you know, again, we as a governing body have authority over, around the city, but parks, there's some serious limitations to the things we can do with parks with regard to selling property, selling a park, you know, it has to go to a vote of people. To dismantle a park has to go to a vote of the people, and so all of the sudden, it just kind of flashed a bit of a red flag into my head that we're going to grant an easement to a private entity. But you're right, I mean, it has this telecommunications aspect, and I don't know if that was covered by the telecommunications act or not. So that was really the nature of my question was, is that something different when we get into the park property? And is there any, you know, you know, I just, I'd not heard of us doing that for anything else that I can think of.
Sure, and, oh, go ahead, Don.
Welcome, Director Kearney.
Good evening, Counselors. Don Kearney with Parks and Rec. I might just be able to elaborate a little bit more. Obviously, we work really close with Jerry Jongling and the Public Works team on putting that master license agreement together, and one of the things that we've seen over the years is a lot of requests to put the really tall towers, you know, the really big ones that have the large flags like you'd see along 229, and for the most part, we really resisted those going into our city parks because we just didn't feel like it was an appropriate use of the parkland. In this particular case, and in many other cases, we do allow utilities to bring utilities into our parks to serve our park needs, and as we looked at this particular case with the 5G technology that are much smaller and much more discreet, so to speak, with the technology that they actually do with the hardware on the actual lights, we felt like this is actually in a lot of ways beneficial to the park system. You know, we have a lot of tournaments that are now, go to online scoring, and they keep track of all the statistics, whether it be soccer, softball, or, you know, just people at large events where they're trying to, you know, you know, this, excuse me, the St. Patrick's Day Parade is another example of where you get a lot of demand. On the Event Center is another example. So where we have these big events, Levitt be another example, where we believe it's to our benefit to have- it's to our benefit to have access and better, um, um, communication opportunities for people that are using the self, cell service. And so, uh, we really, in this regard, as, as Tori's mentioned, it's replacing an existing light pole, makes it a little taller, but as our park board looked at it, we felt like this is a good way to improve the, um, the service availability in our park system, but also do it in a way that it's aesthetically pleasing. So hopefully that helps, but I just, just know that there are a lot of other utilities that, that are provided access to, you know, light up our ball fields and provide a lot of services, water, sewer, electric, you know, gas, those types of things. And so it's not uncommon to, to see that happen.
Okay, thank you. That was very helpful. And then I guess one last question. How long is this easement for? Is, is there a term on the easement? What kind of easement are we actually giving them? Is it tied to the master licensing agreement?
Um, there is no term on the, on the easement. Until they take the cell tower out, um, the easement would be there.
So it expires at the point they take it out? What about if they replace it?
If they replace the cell tower with another one?
Yeah. I mean, do we have to enter into a separate agreement after they, let's just say we get 10G someday, you know, whatever?
Yeah, the, the easement would still be there, and the power and fiber would still be there. They might have to, uh, pull in different lines, but, um, the, the actual easement would still be there. That being said, if, if we were doing development or anything through that easement, they would have to move, and the cost for them to move would be on them.
So this is a perpetual easement?
Yeah, yes.
I'm not happy with that answer. I was, I was feeling good about it until then. All right, thank you. I've asked enough questions.
Other questions from the council? Or a motion?
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Sale.
Moved by Jensen, seconded by Sale. Any comments? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Council members, Breckie?
Um, yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
That item passes eight to zero. Item thirty-five.
Item thirty-five, second reading and ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, providing supplemental appropriations of the debt service reserve for 2009A and 2009B, final debt payment. Sponsor is the mayor.
Welcome, Director Pritchett.
Good evening, council. Uh, as I noted last week, uh, this is kind of a technical correction to a previous ordinance that the, uh, this body passed a few weeks ago to pay down, uh, three bonds that are existing bonds for the City of Sioux Falls. Uh, you had allocated and appropriated $25.2 million for that purpose. Uh, we're coming back to ask for the 4.3 million of the reserve of that bond to also be applied to that repayment. Um, it's a small technical correction. Uh, uh, we went through it in pretty good detail last week. Happy to answer any questions you have on this, on second reading.
Thank you. This is a second reading. Any public input? Seeing none, any questions or motions?
Move approval? Second, Jensen.
Moved by Selberg, seconded by Jensen. Comments? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Council members, Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yeah.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
That item passes eight to zero. Item thirty-six.
Item thirty-six, first reading and ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 601 West Eighty-Sixth Street and 7805 South Dakota Hawk Place from the C2 Neighborhood Commercial District to the LW Live Work District number 12853-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval of five to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020, and private applicant is KT Holdings LLC.
Yes, so the applicant we have here is Kristen Capital Holdings, Eric Mooney. The owner is KT Holdings. Again, that location is just kind of to the west of the south side Walmart over there. It's about 3.04 acres, and they are looking to do a mixed-use building of approximately 22,000 square feet, and they want to be approximately, uh, residential on floors two through four, with the office on the first floor there, which would be approximately nine efficiency units, 57 one-bedroom units, and 27 two-bedroom units, and then 15 three-bedroom units. And we are recommending approval. Uh, so we recommend, we're looking for a se- second reading.
Thank you. This is a first reading. You have up to three minutes to comment. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, questions from staff, or questions for staff, or motions? Counselor Breckie?
Just one question. I noticed the planning commission recommended approval by, it was a 5-0 vote. What was the reason that there was not a unanimous vote that you can best remember?
Somebody else?
Uh, we, because we didn't have six, though, you mean?
Yeah.
There was a conflict of interest on one end, so they couldn't devote on that last one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, could I get a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020?
Move approval? Second, Jensen.
Moved by Selberg, seconded by Jensen. Comments? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Council members, Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yeah.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
That item passes eight to zero. Item thirty-seven.
Item thirty-seven, first reading and ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located south of South Lancaster Drive and east of South Brook Drive from the RD2 Residential Suburban Townhome District to the RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density District, number 12879-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020. Private applicants, Empire Homes LLC, Brady Hyde.
So the applicant on this one, Empire Homes, Brady Hyde, they're also the owner on this property. And this general location is to the northwest, if you will, of Ellis Road and Forty-first Street. So we annex land in it. It's currently, on that map is green. This is the area just to the west of that area, just south of that T Elementary School. It's approximately 7.58 acres, and currently they're looking at trying to fit their kind of uses on that property, and they feel that the rezone would best accompany that. And so this apartment complex conceptually would look kind of like the one on the right-hand side here. And so we've looked at that, uh, with all uses, thinks that they could match. We recommend approval. On that side, we're looking for a second reading set.
Thank you. This is a first reading. Public has up to three minutes to speak on this item. Anybody to speak? Seeing none, questions for Counselor Breckie?
I don't want my fellow council members to be upset with me. I'm not trying to be over, overly, um, questioning tonight to extend this meeting because, but I do, I do, is, is, I have a similar question, and I, I'm wondering if it's possible to answer comprehensively. I'm noticing on all of the, the zoning stuff, or the, the land use stuff tonight, it's a 4-0 vote for all of these. Is there a similar explanation for that? I'm used to having a little more dip than my, my red notes, so I'm kind of, you know, trying to deal with what I have here. Um, so I just, if there is, it would just stop me from asking all these questions.
Oh, yeah, so all the rest of these, uh, if my memory's serving, my memory's a little, so the last one, I accidentally lied to you on that one. That, that 5-0 was our full board. We only had five people there. We only need five to have a meeting. On this one, these were on consent, and so they all had the same vote because they've, they voted through on that side, and one person had to stay out of consent.
Pardon, one person?
Once, one person had, so on consent, Jen, if, if you have an item on there that you have a conflict with, we have you sit out, and by our bylaws, we only need a 4-0 vote to do pass consent. So then they just sit out instead of pulling the item, one item off, and then we just vote on consent. So that's kind of what happened there.
Okay, thank you. And I thank you, you know, for the patience of my council members. It's just kind of important to me whether or not we have slip, split votes on the, on the planning commission when we have these things. So, and again, without the details in, in the notes that we're used to having, I just wanted to pursue that a little, a little further. So thank you for your patience on that.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I'll look for a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020.
Move to approve, Breckie?
Do I have a second?
Second, Sale.
Moved by Breckie, seconded by Sale. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Council members, Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yeah.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes eight to zero. Item thirty-eight.
Item thirty-eight, first reading and ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property south of East Fifty-seventh Street and east of Six Mile, South Six Mile Road from the AJ Agriculture District to the RS Single Family Residential, rural number 12885-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020. Private applicant, Signature Companies, Clint Ackerman.
So the applicant owner is Signature Companies, Clint Ackerman here. General description here is kind of an interesting one. It's south of Fifty-seventh Street and east of Six Mile Road. So this is the area where Fifty-seventh Street kind of actually starts going up and no longer is the border between the two counties. It's approximately 3.42 acres in total, and what they're looking at for here is to build a private residential at this location. This is, as you may want to note, be noted, a phase one approach to this overall development. Uh, we're looking to hold back phase two until after paved surfaces are accessible to the site on Fifty-seventh Street or Six Mile Road. So this is kind of that first step, which could be however long it takes to get that side, but this is what they're looking for at this point in time. Staff has reviewed this, found it to be the minimal request needed to do what they would like to do, and recommending approval with setting second reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Albert. This is a first reading. Anyone who would like to speak for up to three minutes on this item, may please come forward. Seeing none, questions from the council?
Move approval? Second, Jensen.
Got a move, moving for approval by Selberg, and we'll give the second to Jensen. That's to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Council members, Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yeah.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
That item passes eight to zero. Item thirty-nine.
Item thirty-nine, first reading and ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 1201 East Dyke Drive from the C2 Neighborhood Commercial District to the I-1 Light Industrial District, number 12894-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020. Private applicant, Granite Valley Holdings, LLP, Dustin Risti.
So this location is north of I-90 along Cliff Avenue at, uh, 1201 East Dyke Drive, just, just to the east of North Cliff Avenue up there. It's approximately 1.32 acres at this location. And again, they're looking to rezone it to I-1. They finally have a use in mind. A lot of this area was zoned, and you'll see another one just like this, where they finally have end use in mind, so they want to rezone it so they get the proper side of things when they're looking to actually build on it. Um, this side, they're looking at contractor shop. Staff reviewed it, looked at the area, recommends approval, looking to set second reading.
Thank you. This is another first reading. Any public input on this item? Seeing none, questions or motions?
Move, we set a date of second reading Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020.
Second, Breckie.
Second.
Moved by Sale, seconded by Breckie. Any other comments? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Council members, Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yeah.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
That item passes eight to zero. Item forty, please.
Item forty, first reading and ordinance of the City of Sioux, City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 1300 and 1304 East Dyke Drive from the C2 Neighborhood Commercial District to the I-1 Light Industrial District, number 12909-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020. Private applicant, Reynolds Construction Management, Paul Reynolds.
So as you can see, uh, the last one we just rezoned, or looked to set the second reading, I should say, is right here in the bottom right-hand corner there. So that's the location is about 0.86 acres both. Uh, they, again, the owner, the applicant owner here is Reynolds Management Construction. Uh, they're looking at building contractor shops here as well. And so you can see here with this conceptual plan here is the general concept plan, what they're looking for. We've done the same review. Also recommend approval on this one. Looking for a second reading setting. Thank you.
Thank you. Public input on this item? Seeing none, any questions or a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020?
Move to approve, Breckie?
Do I have a second?
Second, Jensen.
Moved by Breckie, seconded by Jensen. Any comments? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Council members, Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yeah.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
That item passes eight to zero. Item forty-one.
Item forty-one, first reading and ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 505 West Eighty-first Street from the CN Conservation LW Live Work, RA2 Residential Apartments, Moderate Density Districts to the LW Live Work District, number 12914-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020. Private applicant, Eric Willidson.
So this rezoning application is, uh, just north of the Subaru dealership over on Eighty-Fifth Street and Minnesota Avenue. It's approximately 0.71 acres total here, and they're looking to rezone the whole lot into one LW Live Work lot instead of the one you see currently where there's a small portion of RA2 Remnant piece and then the CN down below. They are looking to expand their parking lot into a portion of this area. Um, with the location that they're going, this is generally the location they were looking at originally, but it could be larger. The whole lot is LW. Uh, we have informed them, just for your own knowledge, that based on this proposal right now, if they wanted to use it for car sales, an additional conditional lease permit would also be required based on the existing residential in the neighborhood. Uh, with the review on this, plank, or City Planning is recommending approval and looking to set second hearing.
Thank you. This is a first reading. Any public input on this item? Seeing none, any questions for staff? If not, I will look for a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020.
Move to approve, Breckie?
Second, Selberg.
Moved by Breckie, seconded by Selberg. Any comments? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Council members, Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yeah.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
That item passes eight to zero. Item forty-two.
Item forty-two, first reading and ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 3303 South Lisa Drive from the AJ Agriculture to RS Single Family Residential Suburban District, number 12915-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020. Sponsor is the mayor.
So in this one here, um, the City of Sioux Falls is the applicant on this side of things. The owner is Clayton and Jenna Hogadorn. Um, the area is 0.37 acres. This is an existing single-family, uh, one where it's interesting to note for you that Annexation Agreement Resolution 09-20 brought this specific property and listed drive into the city limits. As part of that agreement, which I helped broker, um, we indicated that we would help them with the process of rezoning their house. So it comes in as is in the county, which was ag land, and we would like to make that RS Single Family, which is the appropriate zoning. So in case, uh, something were to happen where they want building permits, need to rebuild the house for some unforeseeable reason, they can do such. So with that, staff recommends approval, looking to set second reading. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a first reading. Any public input on this item? Seeing none, any questions or motions?
Move approval?
Second, Breckie.
Moved by Selberg, seconded by Breckie. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Council members, Breckie?
Yes.